Welcome to the regularly scheduled Maryland Council meeting for the town of Berlin. It is Monday, July 28th. Hard to believe it's July 28th. I always thought that was the type of a problem. And...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes.
We should approve.
Now you have the motion by Councilmember Waters and the second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Let the record reflect that the approval of the minutes passed unanimously with all Councilmembers present. Up next is agenda item two. We have two groups getting sworn in this evening. We'll take the first group, which is our Ethics Commission members. We have Ben Allen and Brittany Lindsay, if you don't mind, coming forward. We'll do you first, and then we'll go over to Historic District.
Take this. I've got this.
Do them up. See if you can come on over here. All right. So this should be pretty quick and easy, but you're going to raise your hand now for the moment. It's because it's July 28th, isn't it?
Yes.
We're all kind of sad that summer's almost over.
No.
All right. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and then your name.
Aye.
Do swear and affirm
Swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution.
and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, serve as a member of the Town of Berlin Ethics Commission in accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state. Congratulations. Now you can use your hands in. I know, sit there. One more step, and then you're there. Just sign and then initial in the bottom right, and then we'll do a picture together. Let's do these two, and then we'll do Historic District. But we've been doing group photos. And then, if you don't mind, we'll have you come back up for us real quick. So go ahead and have a seat, and then we'll do a group photo in just a moment. All right. Lisa Doyle. Thank you again. So Lisa's joining us. Come around this way. Just so you don't have to go over to the court. So Lisa's joining us on the Historic District Commission. Thank you. That way the people watching at home can see you as well. Not to add an impression.
No, no, no.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, if you don't mind. Aye, and then your name.
Aye, Lisa Doyle.
Do swear and affirm
Do swear and affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and that I will be faithful
And I will be faithful.
and bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance.
to the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland.
and support the Constitution and laws thereof
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment.
diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice serve as a member of the Town of Berlin Historic District Commission
Serve as a member of the Town of Berlin Historic District Commission.
in accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state.
In accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. Sign in. Your name, and then initially in the bottom right. And then, let's see. And then if we can get that. Where did you guys get it? Did you leave me already? There we are. Then bring it. Sarah, please turn for you.
Thank you.
And then let's spread out. So one of you, if you don't mind, coming across. No, no, no. You're not getting away that easy. One in here.
I'm going to come from there. Sorry. Ready? One, two. Thank you.
Congratulations again. Up next is agenda item three, and we have a couple of first reading. So... So up first is agenda item 3A. If we could just keep it down just a bit, it is a little hard to hear in this room. According to 3A, ordinance 2025-JAC-03, amending chapter eight of the business license, Article II, licenses, and our town attorney, David Gaskell, is going to run the point.
Yes, this is our first reading. We'll have a public hearing on this at our next meeting. What this ordinance does is put some teeth into the business licensing ordinance. Of course, if you look at this, you can see that section 8-26A was the entirety of that section. We were now adding sections that would allow the mayor and council to sanction business owners who allow their customers to, I guess, be unruly, throw trash around, things like that. Council asked that I draft it, and I did, and I think it's sufficient.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Any questions for David regarding ordinance 2025-03?
I have a question. For section C, number five, I just added two or three words at the end. And those words were... Were...
I don't have any. I don't have any specific words.
Words are... And situations. emanating from the premises.
I think it's just here. Pardon?
Yes.
Can you read what that says?
Yes. It says, fighting and/or disorderly conduct on the premises or emanating from the premises. That means something starts in my place, and just because it moves off my property, I could be held harmless, but I think folks ought to be responsible.
Does the council wish to amend this tonight, what you can do, or would you rather wait for the public hearing?
How does the group feel? What do you argue?
It really doesn't matter. I mean, we should probably do it if the council is in agreement with that amendment. We should probably do it now. That way we'll have a clean copy in two weeks.
And the public gets to see what's recommended.
Yes.
So how does the group feel? Vice President Burrell's recommendation is on page 14 of the packet, item C, number five. Section C, item number five. And that is to add at the end, fighting and/or disorderly conduct on the premises or emanating from the premises.
It's just a consideration, right? That we don't get the big picture of the license revocation? I mean, that's the only idea. So you're saying that fighting ordinance, that's actually a little hypothetical, I guess, that there's a fight that breaks out in a bar, and it falls out of the outside in a window to another, you'd say, retail store that's broken? That the kind of fallback on accountability falls back to the place where it originated?
How does the group feel before it's added to the copy?
I think it's considerable. Something to consider.
Well, Dean's making a motion to add that, and we'll listen to the second.
Got a motion by Vice President Burrell to amend section C five. Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Let the record reflect that the vote unanimous. Gaskell, you'll make the provision for the public hearing?
It'll be here tomorrow.
Thank you.
It's also important to remember that these are not automatic revocation licenses. It gives you the ability to remake based on these things.
Thank you. All right. Up next is agenda item 3V, and that's ordinance 2025-04. Just for everybody that may have seen the copy that was digital that went out originally, there is an incorrect version out there, but the correct version is over on the table and in the packets that were available for pickup over there on the table. So...
The version that's online now is correct.
Perfect.
Is this correct in here?
Can you print?
I believe so.
On page 20 of the packet, 27 of them.
I have my phone through a line by line, but we think so.
Is what ended up in their package tonight correct?
Correct, yes. Yours has swapped out. They appropriate ordinance draft.
Perfect. So ordinance 2025-04, and that's amending chapter eight, business license, Article III, peddling and soliciting. And town attorney David Gaskell is running point on that as well.
This was discussed at our last meeting. It was a discussion item. The council, we discussed the changes that we made to our ordinance dealing with peddling, and everyone seemed happy. This is the first reading. We'll have a public hearing at our next meeting.
Any questions for Gaskell or requests for them?
Are we allowed to discuss this?
Yes, absolutely.
So... My wife's not too sure how to word this, but I think it's possible... There are big concerns shared with me that it's possible some definitions and explanations and verbiage may be a bit blurry, a bit confusing. So I was just wondering if the group was interested, or perhaps not, since this is first reading, of kind of tabling it for the public hearing for the second meeting in August, so that we can further review some of the definitions of some of the things and the overall stance of constitutionality, of this.
On what sections will you...
Well, specifically, like no trespassing or no soliciting signs on private property. I had a... We were all made aware of a resident who was told by some folks that the no trespassing sign really doesn't mean anything until they're already on the property. This, as I understand, was not legal advice, but it led to a whole bunch of questions and then some research on what do other municipalities do? And is it... How unconstitutional or how constitutional is soliciting and peddling? So I'm just suggesting or offering to the group that we maybe take another week or two and take a look at this a little bit in the legal realm.
Can I just remind you that even if you outlaw peddling and soliciting, it's not going to stop people from walking towards and not getting anywhere. The speed limit's not going to stop people from speeding. Just a fair... You know, even if you outlaw it, it's not going to stop the action.
I understand that. Even having it in here and getting permits does not stop soliciting.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
David, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding you have to use verbally trespassing property.
Well, if it's posted, you're not supposed to go on property. You know, as a matter of fact, and Arnold can back this up, if someone walks on your property, and you see that you have a no trespassing sign, and you say, hey, get the heck off my property, and they leave, then nothing's going to happen. Anything like that.
But again, posted property, you can be charged. Yes. That's the answer to the question. But again, you warn people, you tell them to get off your property, and they would have to see the sign, and you have to know that they know that the sign is posted properly, and it's conspicuous.
So would it also then, can we... Would it be possible then... Hold on, let me get my notes. Then that... Can we add something that the actual permit says on there that the permit holder must abide by all posted signage on private property, such as no trespassing or no soliciting?
You wouldn't want to put it on a card. What we do is we hand out the rules. So whatever the rules are, before someone can peddle or solicit, you give them the rules. That's what you would do. So again, if you have an ordinance, you highlight it, hand it to them. And again, by accepting it, taking it, means that they understand it. And if they either violate, then no permits and whatever penalties are prescribed by law. That's what we go by.
So in addition to what you are requesting, is that we can adjust it?
Well, I think it would be... I think it would be of ourselves a little bit more if they had some wording like that on their person. I doubt someone who's going door to door is going to keep that handout on them other than the permit that they issued. It's probably sitting in their car. So...
Well, they don't need it, and they're not going to carry it around.
Right.
And again, your card is this big with the names, the picture, or whatever you put on it, and that's it. It's not going to be some big giant card with all the rules on the back of it. I mean, that doesn't make any kind of sense. They know that if this is no soliciting, no trespassing, that they're not supposed to do that. That's them?
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Gaskell regarding ordinance 2025-04? All right. Thank you, Gaskell. And the public hearing on that is August 11th. The first, using it on the second Monday, first Monday. Perfect. All right. Up next is...
The what?
It's the 11th? Okay. Always 11?
It's on Monday. Yeah.
Perfect.
All right. I'm jumping into September.
It's okay. So up next is agenda item number four. This is a public hearing for FY25 Community Development Block Grant Program, CBVG. Sarah Borbinkel is going to run point, executive assistant for the mayor's office. The important thing to note is this is for funding that we've already received and expended. So Sarah, you would like us to open the public hearing, and then you're going to give your spiel, and we'll take any public comment from there.
Yes. And before you open the public hearing, could you let everybody know that if any street signs are... To get those street signs that are very capable, Inter Arusa is organizing it, and they're available downstairs, just connect with Arusa. You...
Street signs, Arusa.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Jeff, I just wanted to have one thing to collect. You said that it's money that have already been expended or even partially expended.
Partially expended. Thank you. Go ahead. All right. Actually, we'll open the public hearing for FY25 Maryland Community Development Block Grant, CBVG. Sarah, you can begin, and then we'll take anything from the public.
Okay. I thought you did a great job of this already, but I thought I would start by just reminding us all that the second public hearing related to this grant has to be held prior to the expiration of the grant agreement. The purpose is to provide the public with an update as to the activities and accomplishments resulting from the use of the grant funds. Hearings must take place in conjunction with a regularly scheduled meeting of the elected public officials of the grantee. Additional hearings are encouraged if funds are spent by the grant expiration date, but the national objective requires additional time to complete, or if there are any issues with the grant. That's not the case here. This is just our standard public hearing. It was published in the local newspaper five days in advance, so I was hoping maybe some of our friends here tonight came to hear more about this grant, and which I'll tell you.
I did.
That the Town of Berlin has spent almost all of the $100,000 of the CBVG funding that was awarded to us in July of 2024 in order to begin the architecture and engineering on the site of our future community center at 130 Flower Street. We started the process by conducting an original community survey about the center in partnership with Beacon from Salisbury University. Activities conducted by Halyi Architecture included collecting the data for feasibility studies, comprehensive architecture and engineering services, community engagement via in-person focus groups about the design and function that were held in May, all of which have contributed to the production of a very comprehensive feasibility study, which will be presented to the mayor and council at our next meeting on August 11th. The Town of Berlin has until July of 2026 to spend these funds, but I would say that by spending the funds in an expedient manner, we have created more eligibility to reapply for future funds sooner. I also want to note that the elimination of spotlight of the multipurpose building is also funded by DHCB, but is a special grant and is not related to this specific grant, which we... You remember, we were just awarded $300,000 for that. I have more information about our feasibility study, but I think that we should wait to discuss it in depth when we have Halyi Architecture here to present it on August 11th. And we have, I think, I have a paper for Mayor's Act to sign that would be our third and final request for reimbursement, which gets us to $99,999.68.
Perfect. All right.
Thank you.
Well, hold on. Let's see if anybody from the public would like to comment regarding the mayor and council's expenditure of the FY25 Maryland Community Development Block Grant, CBVG funding, or anything that Sarah just mentioned. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right. So we're about 15 minutes ahead of schedule. Can I see a show of hands who's here to talk about sidewalks? Can we get a motion by the council? You think you can do it in 15 minutes? If I move public hearing up? Yes or no?
Yes.
It's either that or we have to wait until the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So can I get a motion to move? Thank you. All right. So let's move public comment. Anyone that would like to begin the public comment regarding sidewalks along Old Orchard City Boulevard? Start with the first one. You can come up with a name and a street name. I do want to preface by saying some of you have reached out individually. Others have reached out via email. This is something that we continue to advocate for at the Maryland State Department of Highway, the State Highway Administration. It's in our consolidated transportation plan request. Councilman, former councilmember Troy Fornell hits me just about every time he runs down Old Orchard City Boulevard. I haven't forgotten it. Sarah and I worked diligently with the District One office, but seeing you all here tonight is going to help strengthen the case. So know that it's not falling on deaf ears, but please, we've got until about 6:40, 6:45, and then we need to pick back up with our agenda. Go ahead. Go on. Let's go first. And if you're going to comment, and somebody's already said what you're going to say, just let's keep moving along, or just say, I agree, or something like that.
Good evening. My name is Dirk Whittison. I'm a resident of the Town of Berlin. I live at 505 Sunlight Lane, Purnell Crossing. This is my wife's day. She lives with me. I'm also... I'm also a member of the Planning Commission for the Town of Berlin. And we've owned this unit two different times, and this is the most recent time we just recently moved in. I did some just general research in regard to sidewalks and the importance of them. And it came back that sidewalks serve a critical role in enhancing pedestrian safety by physically separating pedestrians from vehicle traffic. It says sidewalks create a designated path for pedestrians, reducing the risk of conflicts with vehicles on the road. Studies show that streets without sidewalks are more than twice as likely to have driver pedestrian crashes compared to streets with sidewalks. Providing walkways separated from travel lanes can prevent up to 88% of walking along roadway crashes. Well-designed sidewalks can incorporate a buffer zone between the sidewalk and roadway to further enhance pedestrian comfort and safety. Well-maintained, connected networks of sidewalks encourage walking, which offers a safe, accessible means of transportation, especially for older adults who may be more dependent on walking options. Sidewalks allow for the application of essential pedestrian safety skills, such as stopping, looking left or right for traffic, and being aware of surroundings according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And if I may approach, my wife.
If you don't mind, just hand them to the mayor and show the question.
Thank you.
What I've given you is the Maryland Department of Transportation. It's entitled Traffic Volume Data 2023, the annual average daily traffic. The first page you're going to see is the full map of Worcester County, but on the second map, I actually blew up and enhanced the Town of Berlin. And in particular, if you'll look, you'll see where 346 is. It shows this area that we're talking about. It shows that the average daily count is 1,611 motor vehicles that go on the downtown road. That being said, my wife is going to talk about what she's been involved with, and she's going to provide to you with this.
Thank you. And then if we could just... Public comments usually two minutes, so if we could try to keep it to that, that would be...
Well, I went around to all three of the neighborhoods yesterday, and they didn't sign the petition, and I have 47 people that did. I left a flyer. I think some of them appeared that probably were applicants that would be soliciting. Maybe I shouldn't be doing that. I don't know. But anyway, I got a lot of different comments of, oh, we run there, or we ride our bikes, or I'm afraid to do that because if I do it correctly, I have to go on the other side of the street to walk in with a stroller and my children. And then I was thinking riding up here, because Dirk goes, you know, that parking is going to probably be really tight, and we were a little bit late because someone came to sign it. And they said, you know, we would walk into town, but we're afraid to. So we drive into town. So there's additional people taking parking places in town that wouldn't do it. But anyway, I had people that said, you know, my son is deaf, and it scares me. Stroller. Oh, I wish I could walk my daughter, semi-year-old daughter, up to the library, but I can't. I only had one person that came to the door that said, no, they were not going to sign. Out of all three vehicles. So...
Can you actually make sure Sarah gets that? If we can keep the hard copy, that's very...
Yes, sure.
The other thing is if you could share a copy of this with us, too. That'll be helpful, because we'll prepare and follow up to the State Highway Administration.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Whoever would like to go next?
David Streben.
Name and street name. My name is Austin Purnell. I live at 117 Prospect Drive. I'm a Dirk and Paul's new planning commission as well. Sidewalks, you know, near there, on the whole of St. Mary Road, you've heard it many times. Some near-death experiences, I had to sort with this people. They're just walking in the street simply, trying to get to town. I want to speak on the fact that the press has already been set. The impact funds were used for anyone's on Broad Street. We know there's money in the impact fund. It's there. Why aren't we using it? That's exactly why we collect the impact funds. So I'd like to see some sidewalks and sidewalks and road, or see that push forward as hard as you can, outside of everything that Dirk said.
I do appreciate it. Just name and street names, please.
Yeah. Matthew Store, Sunlight Lane. I'm also the chairman of the Planning Commission. I've been speaking on these sidewalks for five or six years now, since I got on the Planning Commission. I ride my bike down that road two, three years a year. I walk down with my girlfriend. It's to a point now where she just is threatening to make us drive down the cheers. There are a lot of distracted drivers on that road. It's not, the police is following any which way, but if you go down the side of that road, it is full of beer bottles and making liquor bottles. It is not a great place. As you can see here, we have a lot of kids that have moved in. When I first moved into Purnell Crossing in 2017, 2018, there was one or two kids. School bus didn't come into the, into the community. They stayed outside on Old Ocean City Boulevard. The community has changed with all three developments. We are going to hit a place where someone gets hit, and we're going to be reacting to it, instead of trying to get ahead of us. In the same way that when the Wawa wanted to come, and Ron Cassie and I fought tooth and nail that we wanted a red light there first, because we were going to put safety of Berlin over top of a developer, or, you know, development of the town. Even though we were told we weren't allowed to do that. Me and Ron stood strong that we wanted red lights there because we were scared for the safety of Berlin people. I just really want to emphasize that I understand budget type. Everyone wants to mandate the state pays for this. But for five or six years now, we've been waiting for this update for it. I know when the previous town manager was here, they were running surveys down that road, and he called me about it. And here we are, four or five years later, and we're really in the same spot. So I'm just asking that you guys start looking at, how can Berlin unfortunately pony up and help us with our 75-plus townhouse to be safe and walking through?
Now, you save, you save red light. Where are you asking for red light?
No, I'm asking for red light. I'm talking about where Wawa's coming out.
Okay. Now, you know, you two are the main reason I altered the agenda, right? I know that, how old are you?
I'm eight, six.
Eight and six. Well, I got a six-year-old little guy that's probably getting close to bedtime, so I saw you in the audience.
It's summer, don't like at bedtime.
My son has bedtime. And Dean knows they get nap time. Well, a little, a little gets nap time.
I'm Vanessa Stein, and we're also at Sunlight Lane, and I completely agree with everything that's been said, so I just wanted to let them speak quickly.
Go ahead.
Do either of you guys want to say something?
No.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm going, I'm going to build the sidewalks because when you want to like sound here to get ice cream, in instances, no sidewalks, there's a big risk of ice cream to fire car, and I'd rather not get it.
We would rather you not get it. You're very well spoken.
I would just say, well, if they're not there, we could about hit by a car or anything. When we go down, see that ice cream, it's actually really dangerous to get if you didn't have sidewalks, you need to know these things.
Thank you for that. Now, what's your favorite flavor of ice cream? That's a true question. Do you have a favorite? I like Javajole. My son likes Javajole.
John, John recommends Javajole.
I know, I was saying, my son likes Javajole. Probably would not want him to have Javajole.
Even, even when they're not with me and I go for a run, I take my earbuds out until I get to Main Street, because like Matt said, the drivers are so distracted. And even when we're coming back, we've almost gotten hit because they just aren't paying attention, whether they're on their phones, or what else, whatever else is happening. There's times where I'm teaching them, you can't just trust that they're going to do what they're supposed to do, you always have to be alert. So it's just become a thing for us. So I think those sidewalks would definitely help save the city. So, thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you. Just name and street names, please.
I recognize that's a hard act to follow. My name's Ellie Marks. I live in Westview, so the neighborhood breakdown from Purnell, 501 World Court, just very quickly want to advocate for our new neighborhood as well. And echoing the sentiments of everybody, we have full support from the people in our neighborhood that we've talked about, many young families with kids. Nobody's mentioned the dogs in the world. I take my two dogs down that road to walk to the farmer's market. I walk almost in the farmland, that's to the, if you're heading into town, you'd be on the left side of the road, so, yeah, for the four-legged friends, for our children, for our families. Yeah, full support, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Marion Council? So I saw a lot of hands up. I take it that, about how many, about how many people? Can we give it a hand count again? Sarah, would you say?
A lot.
I'd say 30? Let's call it 30.
Make sure that you're, you're signing in on the sheet that's there on the table. That's the best way for us to track it.
And, Sarah, you're probably new to the place.
I am. Nice to do this again.
Nice to see you.
I'd share a second segment with everybody. That was probably the first act I took when I got on council, 15 years ago. It was that same thing, kids, babies, dogs, walking down Broad Street, almost getting hit. Went to the mayor and said, "Mayor, look what we've got this, this time, he was working for State Highway Administration." He says, "Well, you know, they've got a plan to do it, it's going to be in 10 years." I said, "Mayor, what did all those people pay those impact fees for?" And he says, "Well, just exactly this." So we broke stride from the normal, "Let's wait for the state." And we said, "Let's just do it ourselves, because the money's in the bank." You've got a million dollars in the bank right now. It's not going to cost anywhere near that. And all these owners back there in that neighborhood, take $2,000, one way or another, in this impact fee, which is 218 grand just sitting there. You all can use it, you've done it before. I don't think you on the council, I did that. So I just like said, "Hey, you got the money, you know there's a need there, someone here's going to get hurt, please stop it."
Do you have a sense of cost?
What's that?
Do you have a sense of cost for it?
I don't, I know that one over there was like 80. Now, that's been a while back, so I'm sure it's been a bunch more. It's going to be close to that 220, when I'm getting by time, I guess. I know you got to do the engineering, and make sure you got the easements.
So the, the hard part is right now, is that the state's on board with wanting to do the project. And we even, so what we did in the consolidate, each year, the town of Berlin submits to Worcester County what's called a Consolidated Transportation Plan Request. And we rank our, we don't really rank, we said, "These are all of our priorities." And then Sarah and I take that every time, we talk to the state, and we, we talk to Mark Crampton from District One quite a bit. And we bring forward our concerns, and we say, "This is our low-hanging fruit, right? Whether it's crosswalks, whether it's sidewalks, that's easy stuff, right?" The challenge here is that, and do we have anybody that lives on Old Ocean City Boulevard that's here tonight?
Directly, no.
Directly. The challenge is, is the easements. There are no easements along Old Ocean City Boulevard to place the sidewalks. So the first step is to get the easement secured along those property orders. And Sarah and I talk to Mark all the time, "What can we do to help? What can we do to get this further along?"
Do you want to mention the, the decrease speed limit and the design that they're putting in?
That's all designed to help, but I mean, it doesn't address truly, I mean, you can go 20, and Chief can probably attest to this, you can go a low speed, but if you're not paying attention to what's in front of you, or if you got fog or something like that, it increases the likelihood that it's not a safe environment to walk. We, we know that. And we keep advocating that with the state partners. But where we need to go is getting those easements from the folks that live on the south side of Old Ocean City Boulevard. Otherwise, you're going to have to try and secure it at a farm, run it all the way up, and then cross over again at already pretty dangerous intersection.
And that easement, there's not five feet from the paved surface back in there at all?
I'm not saying that it doesn't exist in some places, but it is not contiguous.
That's what we did, we went down and looked at all that, and the state said, if for some reason they didn't have anything on Broad Street, they'd help us get it. And in that domain, however, if you made five feet, already got it.
Yeah, we don't need much, but we do need the easements along that corridor.
I, I had thought there was enough, five, there was five feet from that paved surface to the side, so I love that.
According to them, there is not. And that's been the holdup of the project. They've also put forward some ideas for the intersection there. They include...
Don't you say...
They, they do, but it's not, it's not really likely. But they do suggest a four-way stop sign there. That is in all their, their drawings, is a four-way stop sign.
Somebody's going to get us, so whatever you guys can do, it's...
Well, this stuff helps. This really does help advocate and track them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, they do. I will tell you this, I don't talk to the State Highway Commissioner, Troy, you know, that's not, those are the people I talk to on a regular basis. However, when they see us coming, not even just the mayor, like I think we ran MML, and I wasn't talking to them at the moment, Mark person, and I just happened to have that Berlin shirt on, and he walked up and was like, "Listen, I just want you to know that we are really working on these sidewalks on, on Old Ocean City." And I was like, "Oh, hello, I'm just need to make contact with whoever you are." And he went through the whole spiel of who he was. So, Berlin, they're definitely, they think that we're coming for them. So they definitely are thinking about, or at least, you're on there, when they see Berlin, they're thinking, "Old Ocean City Boulevard, and how can we make this work?" That was the first thing out of his mouth before he even said, "Put a face to his name", that type of thing.
Always on the tip of our tongue. All right, anyone else that we want to get back on track with our meeting?
Sorry. I just, real quick, I'm at 507 Sunlight Lane, and I, Melissa Ashen. I want to say I do, I do walk that area, I keep my earbuds in, sorry.
Take them out.
So I, I'll definitely be taking them out from now on. The idea, though, is that safety in that area is not, is universally not okay. Our school bus comes and picks up people on that highway. All of our kids from the neighborhoods just stand in like a not okay area, where people going by that quickly, distracted, might hit them. Our communities were built so that school bus could come in. No, it's not your issue, but if we really want to take on the safety of those kids and our pets and ourselves, I think we need to look at the whole area. I think that, that we're, that if we do something on our part, the State Highway might believe that safety is our first concern, not convenience. And for me, safety is the first concern. I don't want them to take this seriously after someone is physically hurt. So maybe if we took on another issue, and really got the school bus to come in and pick our kids up inside the community, that would help them. It's just a safety concern. Any other ideas? I'm happy to...
We're, we're open to them as well, the chief's always available.
We're all...
Okay, great, thanks.
Just briefly, and I have to talk to Matt, of course, as sort of the planning commission. In my opinion, the wait and see is the very, very wrong plan for what you should do. I think we need to be micromanaging our community and not waiting for a budget string in the state of Maryland that is not going to put any priority on paying or doing anything there. We can get the survey, we can determine whether there's easements, we can determine whether we need to get an easement. But that doesn't get done until we do it. And I'm asking you all to do it and not put this off. It's just wrong, and I don't want the person, like we said, to be reactive to, we have a child run over, a dog, a person, whatever. We don't need to wait for that. And you all know, I represented Wawa trying to come here, so I know about the traffic and whatever. And I've been told that the traffic light will be built before Wawa.
So, back in 2011, when Councilman Purnell was leading this fight, there, I think there is a, perhaps a precedent for us to explore. Rather than waiting and seeing, which I agree, we have been waiting and seeing, and I don't have any hope that anything's happening soon. I believe that all the efforts have been...
We only have something towards them.
Yeah, they have been absolutely, you all have been on it. I'd send a letter, ever since I've been sitting up here, it's been in every letter to the county. But I do think that, back in 2011, this body, the officials that were up here, voted to proceed with engineering study on Broad Street as an opportunity to show the state how serious we are. And I do believe that they know how serious we are, but the study back then was $35,000, it's paid for an impact fee fund of course. And it provided us with a little bit of the work, perhaps, for the state. I understand the need for, or the, I guess, the request to use impact fee funds for it. And I would hope that we would potentially have the votes up here for that. But just so these folks aren't leaving with, "We're going to do our best," if we can at least pursue something else, a new route of engineering services along that road, that truly tell us who owns what. If it's, there's truly not a five-foot easement, I believe, I know there are a couple issues that I've actually heard from a resident on that road, that you all are familiar with, that, that's why that talk about going to the north side of 346 was discussed. And that, to me, is, we're not going, we can't do that, that defeats the purpose, but if it's not going to be on the south side of 346, there's, you know, we're not improving the situation at all. So that's a, to me, a reminder to not pursue that option, which I believe everybody feels that way. But, you know, so that work back in May of 2011, you know, we were able to put forward with engineering services, you know, what the mechanism, how we go forward here, was $35,000 back then. I don't believe it's as long a stretch, but it may be, because we're in, shortly passing Andra to the railroad tracks on Broad. So, back then, it cost $100,000 to do. So, August of 2012 was when the project was officially approved. So, that was when, I'm actually, so I just researched it, because I was, I asked Councilman Purnell oftentimes to rehash it for me, so I just read up on it online, and found a bunch of different stories about it, and obviously, it was like six or seven times it was discussed. You know, if I remember. And, you know, Deputy Carson, Deputy Manager, informed the Marion Council that three sidewalk projects were in the works, and one of which was that State Highway did come forward with funding for that project evidently, according to this. However, I would like for us to, so we don't send these folks that came out tonight with a, with a wait and see, and again, the stress that I understand, intent, you all have worked very hard, but we have 47 signatures, perhaps, if we can bring forward the fact that this room was full, hasn't been full in a while, that's two things. And then the third, if we can forward, figure out how much it costs to engineer, and then move forward with Berlin as prepared to, obviously, we have to find the funding, we have to talk about that. But I would hope that there is impact fee funding, at least for the engineering studies, at least we can move forward in some sort of direction. So we're not just waiting and seeing. Again, I know that, all the things that we've all put good efforts into, especially in the mayor's office. But, you know, we're not really getting anywhere. Everywhere we read is gloom and doom with the state level.
Hey, wait, well, and it's not doom and gloom, so I want to make sure that I express Mark Crampton's feedback to us, right? Because we do have a very good working relationship with M. Tom and the district offices. The problem is, is that the easements, really. I think if we can help address that concern with something like what you're talking about, and what Dirk mentioned in the moment, you know, I think that will help get the funds that are needed and that are likely there for projects like this. You agree, Sarah? In our conversations, I think the big holdup is the easements.
So I, I, not to keep us here all night on this subject, because I know you're concerned about time or whatnot, but this makes me think of when we were getting sidewalks through Flower Street. I mean, we fought for sidewalks for the longest time because our street is alternately thick. Sidewalk, 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 for the talk, I mean, I bought, we bought our house in 2001, and we talked about sidewalks before I even bought the house, and we didn't get sidewalks maybe for 10 or 15 years, maybe thereabout. But when we got sidewalks, and I want you to do some, I'm, I'll look to you, friends, before school starts. But I'd like for us to do a little bit of digging and look to see what the process was there, because the length of spacing between, or the distance on Flower Street, the sidewalks that we got, who knows that area I'm talking?
Councilmember Nichols, I recall the DBNF did the, all the groundwork.
Yes.
What easements we needed.
Yes.
I drafted those easements, and not one property owner refused to sign.
None of us, we, none of us refused, none of us.
Not one person refused to sign.
Not a single one. We all, we were, we were all in agreement, because we allowed...
And for no compensation.
Exactly. There was not even a 50 cent compensation, so, I mean, I'm just, from one neighborhood to another, we are Berlin, we definitely are for you all getting the sidewalks. I can't speak for the folks who say they don't want it to come past their house, but, I mean, at the end of the day, even if it was one person, Dave, you know, like I know, if it was one person out of our entire street, the sidewalks still would have come. That's just how that would have happened. And I'll leave that, 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 that right here for you.
Well, I agree with Steve's assessment 100%. You know, public safety is, is our number one priority in this town. Clearly, we have a situation that is not safe for the public to transition on. So we need to do everything we can to get this thing kicked off. If that needs spending a little impact fee money, do some engineering work, so be it. Maybe we'll get the state into gear and give us the necessary funding.
Give us more tools to allocate.
I am 100% behind what Steve suggested.
But, in the meantime, easement seems to be the issue relating to this project. Just as you have come here tonight and expressed your concern and opinions, we need your help. We need your help in soliciting or obtaining the easements necessary for this project. So anything you can do as the general public to facilitate this endeavor, we'll be very appreciative.
And we might build those no trespassing signs.
That's true. You're not really soliciting. You are, you're engaging your neighbor.
So help us out.
So I, I have a couple of questions, because I feel like I don't have all the...
We should, we got to get back on track, too. We've got a couple engineers here that I had asked if we could skip in front of them, so.
Okay, so, okay. So Natalie, with, I went, I looked at the fiscal '25 budget, and I skimmed FY24. What is our impact fee balance?
It's a little below $1 million, so I don't have a number exactly right now on hand, but I can email the exact number what we have in the bank tomorrow.
Okay. And, and so I guess my other thing that I want to kind of say is, I, I'm, I'm proud of, yes, I'm definitely for the sidewalks. I'm proud that we have, as a, since, what, 2011, that we, on the Planning Commission and the councils before us, and us, and staff, department heads, have kind of evolved to figure out that we don't seem to approve anything anymore that doesn't have sidewalks in it. So I'm just interested to know why or how this particular project got approved without any sidewalks, to begin with.
To be clear, the neighborhoods are off of Old Ocean City, and they do have sidewalks.
Right.
There is a sidewalk on Old Ocean City Boulevard to the, in front of the neighborhood. The areas that don't have sidewalks are the older areas.
Older were annexed, they have sidewalks all around that.
So the new bill does have sidewalks.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, we're doing that now. So my question then is, I mean, I don't think if we have, maybe I'm jumping the gun here, I mean, I agree with everyone that's said anything in Steve's recommendation, I mean, if we have, we obviously have that money in there to do this engineering study he wants to do. So it's kind of like the stormwater RFP that I asked for, we're throwing it out there and seeing how much it costs. So I would go ahead and let him make that motion that he just wants to make.
So should we get a motion, Gasol, for that, to engage DBF or get the number first and then add it as an action?
Well, you can just get the number and see what it's going to be.
Was that number...
Just get the number from DBF.
Did anybody send you an email, Nick?
Yes, please.
Mayor, may I ask, just on the point, I would get easements situated. If that is not going anywhere with a positive green light, I would not engage the engineer and spend money on that, if this is going to be your biggest hindrance to easements.
I think we're, I think what we would first need is, and correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but we first need to identify how many of those easements are in place and how many we actually need. So we're going to need engineers to do that analysis.
But if the public will agree, just engage the neighbors, maybe just verbally to agree to participate on easements given away, or then we can engage and start the study.
How do you all feel about us sending letters to all the property owners?
We prefer that than neighboring.
We need to identify what, or how much easement currently exists, how much we would need. It's a big difference between going to a property owner and saying, "We need five feet," or "We need 10 feet."
Rather than save your time.
So we need to kind of figure out what we have first.
Why don't we say that we had a group of folks come, it's been in our consolidated transportation plan for many years, so headwind we seem to face is easements. We are going to start doing the research. Can you let us know if this is something you'd be interested in? If it doesn't exist, we are likely going to be pursuing it and engage it with the mayor.
The other thing we can do, DBF has a survey team, at least they can do the survey part of it first, before we do the engineering, because if we don't do the survey, the engineering is going to be useless. So if we can get the survey done first to determine what the town or the state owns to get to five foot, the only, the only issue I see on that street is we might have to do impervious sidewalks because of, there's no work for the stormwater management, because it's going to be over 1,000 foot, five foot, that's over 5,000 square feet. We're harder on ourselves than we are on anybody else. Because I'm doing a little lift station, it's only 250 square feet, and they're making, I'm doing more stormwater work than, but we need to look at, we need to figure out our easements first. So let DBF get, Nick, to get us a quote on the survey, so we can determine, it could be something real quick, too, it could be...
And a survey, are we thinking less than 10 grand?
We'll also reach out to say, "Hi, we're, they may have some of this information at their fingertips."
I would think surveys should be definitely under, there's...
If it's under 10 grand, Mary can act. And is there consensus up here to allow them that?
Yes.
Okay.
The surveys want to determine everything, that's what it tells, what easement, where we got to start with our easements.
And then we'll also draft the letters so the folks know we're at least looking into, they see somebody surveying the front yard, they kind of know where we're already at.
And just to, just to throw a word in the water, because you know that's what I do, we will, it is a state highway, so we obviously will have to work in cooperation with that.
And we're going to follow up with Mark again to do it.
Mark, if you're watching.
Impervious surface?
Yeah, but I'd talk on Saturday.
Is that a wrong?
Yes, per, it's per, it's pervious.
Perious, okay.
Yeah, sorry, yes, Broad Street was pervious. We did, we had to foot the money up front, the state reimburses for that.
Okay, that's right.
We had to do, we did some of the work to keep the cost down, we did a lot of the flag and moving the stuff out of the, out of the right of way.
All right, and we're going to move on now to the rest of our agenda, but thank you all, we really appreciate it. It's not falling on deaf ears. Thank you so much. All right, up next is gen item number five, items for approval. All right, the gen item number five, item A, motion 2025-42, and that is the approval to purchase Smith and Loveless, ever last series, 3,000 pump station for West Street Pump Station. Our water resource director, Jamie Latum, and DBF engineer, Nick Bradley.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We're seeking approval for this lift station. It is budgeted in the 2026 budget. We are asking for it to be, pretty much, we're signing a letter intent to buy it now to beat the tariffs. They're talking anywhere from a 15 to a 25% price increase starting probably, I want to say August the 10th to 15th, somewhere's in there, they're looking at a fairly good size price increase, and this will affect, this might stop the project from moving forward some. So we're just actually signing a letter of commitment that we're purchasing it, and hopefully by the time it gets here, we'll have the lift station about ready to be placed in the ground.
Thank you so much for that. I also do want to thank Annette, the new superintendent of Worcester County Public Schools, and the Worcester County School Board for granting our request for moving this lift station from the center of the roadway over to Buckingham Elementary. It's going to, one, improve the infrastructure for West Street, which is part of the work that we're doing along West Street in its entirety, and, two, make it much safer for our folks to be able to access.
Yes, because right now, if you have to work on the lift station, you have to lay in the street to do anything, because the lift station is actually just like Flower Street, that center of the street, so a lot of times your legs are laying out in the street while you're trying to hook up pumps and work on electricals. So this will get us out of the street and protect our, the employees a lot better.
Thank you. Nick, anything to add?
The West Street project is moving forward, we're getting ready to go after the necessary permits for the Phase One construction, so we are on schedule. So as soon as that pump station gets in, we should hopefully already be in the bidding cycle, if not, we have a contractor selected.
Thank you. Any questions for Jamie or Nick?
Yeah, Jamie, go ahead. So this, 137-708, this is the total cost?
That is the pump station, yeah.
Of the pump station?
That is just the, that's equipment.
Okay.
That is not including the labor, the reroute of water lock, or sewer mains and all that, that is just the lift station itself, the pumps, the motors, and the equipment.
So the line that you referenced here has West Street Lift Station cap fees at 750, and West Street Last Lift Station carried forward cap reserve 750.
We should have about $1.5 million in there to do the whole.
To do the lift station, yes.
Jamie, how much do you currently spend any career or anything?
That lift station?
Yeah.
A lot. That lift station's...
I know it's a lot of number.
We're probably out there every two weeks, just because it is an older lift station and the electrical's getting in rough shape, so we were just out there last week, and Tim's not here to speak, but we, a lot of times we have to get Tim to help us because they have to pull the lid so we can get in the lift station. So we, you know, we, it's, we're there quite frequently.
No, I understand the need.
I've never figured out the money wise, because I don't look at it like that, I just know it needs to get back working, but it serves pretty much all of West Street, Henry's Mill, Henry's Green, Powell Circle, Escham, Anddrive, Quillen. So it takes a very good, large portion of town, that one lift station.
We appreciate that.
Much needed, much needed.
Well, I, our biggest, the reason it's kind of, we brought it so quick is, we've been working with the school district to get a 50 by 50 easement from the school. There was some language, they even got it straightened out with the school, and it took a little bit of time, but once we got that straightened out, then we were like, all right, let's get this going before the tariffs hit and some new impact fees on equipment.
All right, any more questions? If not, open it up to the public, any comments regarding motion 2025-42? Seeing none, say aye. Action by the number four. I think I had a motion by Councilmember Horace, and second by Vice President Burrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect the vote unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Nick. Are you, we got a huge still, yeah, all right. All right, up next is gen item 5B, motion 2025-43, and this is RFP 2025-05 for Stephen Decatur Park, Vice President Burrell, Comfort Station. Public Works Director Jimmy Charles, but we'll let Jamie and Nick put on the floor.
I think, honestly, I'm going to, this is Kate's job, she's done, Kate has done tons of good work on this, so I'll back her on this, I'll be her...
Perfect. Our winning factor is at Stephen Decatur Park. This is a grant that was funded with community parks and playground funding, a long time ago.
And I believe we applied twice.
We did, but we...
We rewarded the second part.
Correct, and by that point, the grant always runs a year behind, so you get your quote, and then the price went up, and the price has not come back down. And so we did pursue another round of alternative funding to help bridge the gap. We received that, and we still came in light on where we need to be by about, what, $50,000?
$58.
$58,000. So I said to Natalie and everybody, "Let's get it done, what do we need to get it done? Where do we, where do we land?"
When this project started.
Yeah, we want it done.
How old was your granddaughter?
Four years old, she's 14. She was four years old.
So Nick can speak on behalf of the bid evaluations that we received, but the staff report that prepared, that included the new package, recognizes the fact that we did, upon evaluating the bids, we are roughly $59,000 of a shortfall between what has been budgeted for the project, including the grant muddies that we've received, in comparison with the bid recommended, recommended amount, the breakdown is in here, but it also includes the jemirin costs and all that fun stuff. So all things considered, we, there are a couple of recommendations outlined in the staff report for the council to consider as funding pathways to, as we wrote in the report, to close the gap between being able to move this project forward, given the total cost.
Why don't we let Natalie talk a little bit about her ideal slots revenue? Go ahead.
So the idea was to close the over budget gap, which comes to 59, and that would broaden to approximately, in this, in this memo, we put it as 59. The combination of funding that's available is two grants and $34,000 common as a match from the town originally. So right now, we need 59. Recommendation from the staff is to utilize approximately two months of slots revenues. That option will allow us to deviate the funds coming from the slots revenues to the public facility building, which is totally under the umbrella of the slot revenue expenditures, and also will allow us to put the extra point on the report of the next presentation at the...
It's consistent with what they're asking us to do.
It's consistent with what they're asking, thank you. The second option, that was Jimmy Charles is saying we can reallocate the funds from the FAM, so the Henry's arc of 55, but we're still short a little bit. We can utilize regular general fund revenues from contracted services. He thinks we can push that project up to the next year or wait a little bit longer.
The fence, the fence.
Yes. The third option, we have sufficient to cover that shortfall of $59,000 in the contingency of a general fund. We can reallocate contingency funds and cover the shortfall for this project, but it definitely needs to be, it needs to be going forward 10 years in works, we need to start breaking the ground.
So I'd go with option one, the fence hole, but the fence is important, it needs to be done. The general fund contingency, I think it's smart to hold for the comp plan, and I would...
Or if this project would come a little bit more as we proceed, we can also deviate that contingency.
I'd rather see those few slots. Go ahead.
Well, I was for option one as well, but I just had a question about slots revenue. So in FY '25, it looks like we, the town cut from the casinos about $469,000. I just want to make sure, so that kind of averages out to like $30,000 a month, or...
Approximately the average.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we're not cutting anything as far as the outstanding other obligations. We're good with two?
I assure you, if my proposal, I'll make sure that it's 20% over.
Thank you.
I mean, if it's only two months, I'm all for it.
It's only a month.
It's two months.
Oh, it's two, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was only a month.
I listened a little bit.
My problem. All right, so can we, any other questions regarding motion 2025-40?
Just from a visual perspective, is this about the same size as the Henry Park question?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
It's not much different.
Roughly, roughly.
Yes, they're roughly about the same, going to have the same look, look, same stall, just about, we've made this a little bit more, we learned from that one to make this one a little bit better, more better.
Some building standards have changed as well, so there's some incorporated, you know, the newer standards.
And I want to say it's 12, what is it, 12 by 20?
It's 200 square feet, two individual restrooms, and a pantry.
If it's approved, I think we're hoping to start as soon as possible, and I think it's a 90-day time, contract time, so...
Can Mr. Burrell, can Mr. Burrell cadence be there for the groundbreaking?
Yep, he'd be more, I would be more glad, because we have to do some work on our end before we get started, so he can...
I think we should name them.
I'm going to name the building.
I think you should.
Order that plaque.
We're a brake station.
Brake station, I like it. All right, let's see.
So the motion has two parts, one is approval of the award and contract, and the other is the allocation of the funds.
We need to hear from the public first, any comments? Okay, nothing, Troy?
We're out of here. Motion to approve 2025.
So Jamie made the motion at the top of the vice president. You want to say it?
As long as it gets to my...
You want to say it second? So I got a motion by Councilmember Mary to approve motion 2025-40.
Watch out, Mr. Mayor, they're coming.
With the additional funding coming from option one slots revenue, second by Vice President Burrell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the vote unanimous. This project is getting done.
I make an official motion to name after the vice president.
We can get there, we can do it, we can have some fun with it, don't worry. All right, thank you all, we appreciate it. All right, up next is gen item 5C, motion 2025-44, the approval of funding for improvements to West Street, Washington Street parking lot, from impact fees, and that's town administrator Mary Bowles' report.
This is funding that was allocated in the FY '26 budget that needs to be, sorry, I lost the word, but Natalie gave the assigned funds for the impact fees.
They will send, reassign it.
Perfect.
So is this, is this for the artscaping, what's this, the bumpers or what?
Yeah, this is the stuff that...
Improvements.
Improvement.
Fence, right?
Fence, the parking bumper arrangement that we're going to do in there. Now, I don't know if we'll get fully to 75.
I don't know.
But at least it allows that revenue to be, or that cash flow to be used in the way that it's needed. All right, so any comments from the public? Seeing none, the county council.
Motion to approve this motion.
Motion 2025-44?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the vote unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Up next is motion 2025-45, to designate no parking areas on West and Washington Streets. Town administrator Mary Bowles can run a point, but I'd like to turn to the chief a little.
The motion is to establish no parking zones as, I think that's the one word, as they were discussed in a previous meeting. The map that is up on the screen in front of you just shows existing no parking areas in the general vicinity. Obviously, I didn't try to incorporate everything with the area that was to it. And then the red is indicating what would be the new no parking. So the effect of this would be no parking the entire length of West Street from Main Street to Evans Road on both sides, and on Washington Street. No, it will have the effect, it's already partially, yeah, it's already partially no parking on those sides between Main and Wall. Now it will go from Main all the way over.
So I'm going to email out some suggestions that, to go to the parking group, I don't know if they, I don't know if they all matter like that, but the, really the only one that's applicable at this particular moment is a resident did reach out and offer the suggestion that the no parking on those sides of West stopped at Buckingham Road, Road.
West Buckingham.
West Buckingham Road, instead of going all the way down to, to Evans. The reasoning behind that was that, in their view, it didn't seem to be, parking doesn't seem to be that much of an issue down there because it's a little bit further of a walk. to be that much of an issue down there because it's a little bit further of a walk to the town center. So that was the reasoning, that was his reasoning, I'm just presenting it as a suggestion.
So we've talked about that activity level, Chief, do you want to explain what you thought all day, make me fast? Number one, sidewalks are coming sooner or later, and we need to go ahead and focus towards that. But when you're parking, you are actually almost halfway in the driving portion. Right now, on that side, I only see one vehicle regularly parking there, and that's a work van that parks there, and people park occasionally, but we should be consistent all the way down the street.
I spoke to the residents, while I explained that.
Okay. Just, great.
Is it the one that has the van, or no?
What's that?
Does they have the van?
No.
Okay, so they don't park on the street directly normally themselves?
Yes. Then my only other question is, I mentioned the other part of the equation is for doing no parking enforcement. So I just want to make sure, Chief, you're, we're all good in that area?
So once the signs are available, like citations, and again, folks will call, neighbors will call. So on Sunday, because I'm crazy, I have twenty-eight spots, twenty-eight cars parked from the parking area that's allowed on West, I guess, South, so.
With plenty of parking spaces available in the parking lot.
Yeah, and I really feel like this is really necessary. We had about eighty cars in the parking lot when I checked on the farmer's market today on Sunday, which I'm thrilled about. But it just proves the point that we have to do, for one, people off the street for public safety reasons and to increase the usage of law. If we don't do it, it's gonna continue to happen, and it's gonna continue to spill into other areas. So I feel like it's, this was one of the first discussions, I think, we had, you know, when we were securing the stop, we knew we were gonna have to do this eventually, and I think we have seen with a month of frequent usage that it is a problem. It's all big.
Can I double dip? Is this one of the motions that wouldn't go into effect until like ten or twenty days?
No, it's not impacted that way. It wouldn't go into effect until we have signage, we can put the signage out.
And Jimmy said the lead time is a little bit, so we can get out of there.
Those kind of restrictions come in place for ordinances and that sort of thing.
Can we do, okay, if it's in your judgment, can you do a code red in that area? Can I get closer? Thank you.
All right, any comments from the public?
If we wouldn't write tickets on the first day, it's not to put up, so. Yeah, just what people want. Yeah.
First day.
And if anybody's impacted, we said this at the last meeting, if you are impacted by this and want a special exemption, we talked about it in the last meeting, email maryzak@berlinmd.gov, it's a shared inbox between myself and Sarah. We will evaluate those on a case-by-case basis. That may include the ability to park in the lot. So if anyone reaches out to the council members or district representatives, just note that that is a possibility. Direct them to maryzak@berlinmd.com, and we'll see what we can do to help them. All right, any?
We have a question, is there any more movement, doesn't weigh to this, no parking, is there any more movement on the alignment of Harrison?
We're trying, we're working to try and understand what pieces are needed, with some of the property owners that would be impacted. We're still trying to figure that part out. We hope to be able to move that along pretty quickly and even do some of the work in-house, but it's a challenging road, and the ownership of all the parcels that consolidate there make it even more challenging.
And the fact that it intersects again.
Yes, it's hard.
Can you open?
That's something Decatur and Ben as well.
But I mean, the whole street itself is a challenge.
It truly is.
All of Harrison Avenue is a challenge.
That's Flower and Stephanie Kader, and Oregon Hospital, and those cars.
Yeah, Decatur and the cars. We just like to be a little layer, crook to the side.
Was there an issue or incident over the weekend related to parking? I was accosted in the grocery store the other day, and I mean accosted.
Did you call for backup? Because I was a cop.
And his statement made to me is, what are you all doing up there in town of Berlin? People now fighting over parking spaces? It is radical.
I mean, seriously, fighting over parking spaces are really jazzy.
Well, that was presented to me in the end grocery store.
I think I know what happened. So I saw on Instagram that either Virginia or West Virginia has now rolled out Mustang police cars. So I think it might have been used for Mustang. But they really have, they actually look pretty good. All right, any comments from the public regarding motion twenty twenty-five dash forty-five? Seeing none, we'll take action by the council.
Order to approve twenty twenty-five.
So a motion by Councilmember Merritt?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Green, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes, let the record reflect the motion pass unanimously, thank you. All right, that concludes our items for approval. Up next is agenda item six, and that's the Burn Fire Company, Burn Fire Company EMS annual presentations, and we have President Dave Pritchard here this evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
So. The other people have hazards when you work the twenty-four hour shift, and then you don't get to go home, just take your hell over on thirty-sixes, so that's what happens when you're in this profession.
Come on, that wasn't that long ago.
You used to work that schedule yourself. Well, that's what I said when we were in this profession, so.
So yes.
That's what Chief, Chief Runden worked his twenty-four hour shift yesterday, and was however on management every time today. I think the same thing with EMS capital, I think this is a great for sure. And it's hard to treat in the summertime wise.
Want to start with fire?
Yeah, we'll start with fire, so we got the others.
Can you guys up pretty much? I was just reading from up at the horn. So the fire rescue, so this is our semi-annual report, but it's also the end of the fiscal year. So each category will have two slides. The first slide would be the six-month slide. So this is the six-month for the in-town fire calls, about forty-one percent of the calls being in-town. As you can see, there's a slight decrease in calls, and this just happens, and times increases and decreases. That's why we talked to you about contingency funds and things like that, especially on EMS. For the total fiscal year, one hundred and twenty-two in-town, so thirty-eight and a half percent of calls for an entire fiscal year are within the town limits. A slight decrease there overall. The busiest days, we had a special last time, and it was kind of a joke, but it is important when we're doing scheduling and stuff, when people call out, trying to feel restricted when our busy days are, so it is important to us, operation, to know when those are. So that's the six-month, and it jumps around. As you see, this time, it's Friday, followed by Wednesday and Thursday, last six months, it was Monday and Sunday, so it depends on the cycles again. Same thing with the times, one to two in the afternoon, and then five to six, past six months, it was around the same time. So afternoon, that's pretty consistent for us. The total fiscal year, Thursdays followed by Wednesdays, and again, still there's afternoon, early evenings, five to six, twelve to one. Last year, some lawmakers have moved up a little bit in the day, in our fiscal year. Simultaneous calls, there's again, only two or more calls, fire rescue, occur at the same time. That really stresses our resources. The fourteen times, it did slow down because the past six months, as you can see, we had thirty times that we had two calls, two or more calls at the same time. For the fiscal year, forty-four, a little bit less than the previous year, sixty-three, but again, that's been two or more fire rescue calls occur at the same time. Response times still within the six-month county standard, four minutes and five seconds. This is our fire rescue, and when you hear the sirego, this is all volunteer response supplemented by our career staff, but the main are volunteers that are getting to the firehouse. We're well below the nine-minute matrix support, which is, they get the FPA standards. The county standard is six minutes. Overall, for the entire fiscal year, still very good, four minutes and eighteen seconds. The past fiscal year, four minutes and six seconds, so a little longer, and we've talked to you all before, we attribute that, you all were talking parking earlier, parking congestion in town, things that work members have to kind of go a different route to get to the firehouse sometimes. It takes a few extra seconds. On the financial administrative side, there's our manpower broken down between our emergency calls and our non-emergencies, so almost twenty-eight hundred volunteer hours in the first six months. And again, just remind you, that's only what we record on our computer system. So like, for example, today, I was there almost nine hours, that's not showing up or something like that.
So Dave, referring to that, so how many people volunteer and get the money?
Well, fifty-five, all of our members have pagers, so it's fifty-five people get alerted for calls. How many show up?
I mean physically at the station?
Volunteers, well, at the station, it varies during times of the day. So this morning, I was up there for coffee, and there was, just sort of chairs in room two, three, four, five. There was six, seven of us there for two hours, just having coffee, I'm doing, just like the house chairman, he's doing things in the firehouse. I remember the Edmond Building, there's one in Aron's, I did see a couple cars over during the day that were volunteers, when I went by a while ago, it wasn't anybody there.
So not a specific shift time?
No, we don't do stay-in-bys and shifts there. We let people stay at home and respond, home room, prepare food line or whatever they want.
So Dave, just to piggyback on that question, you said you have fifty-five registered volunteers.
Fifty-five.
Actually, how many of the fifty-five live in the town?
I don't know, I'd have to take the roster and count for you.
So when a call goes up, of those fifty-five, how many do you think will show up for the, what is that?
It depends on the type of call, to be very honest with you. If it's a firearm or something like that, you're gonna have four, five, three or four show up because they know that's kind of what you handle it, and a solid response time, we've only got six minutes to get there. There's no need for a volunteer from Whaleyville to get in his car and drive, or her car and drive all the way to town. Now, if it's an actual fire, like we had last Friday, I was there, we left the fires with five volunteers on the first truck. So again, it depends on what type of call. And it's not that one call is more important than the other, it's again, where you live, what you're in the middle of doing, as I told you, it depends what you're in the middle of. If you're not doing anything, that's good. You're gonna be at your grandchild's birthday, and there's a firearm, you probably ought to stay home to your grandchild. If it comes back and says, and says, there's a, you know, we got there, and there's smoke or grill fire, that person will probably leave their grandchild unfortunately to do that. So that's just the way the volunteer system works. So you take what we can get, we're fortunate. One thing that does help us is our number of people who work shift work, because the daytime is very hard. If all of our volunteers work Monday through Friday jobs, we'd be really in trouble during the day, and we struggle during the day. But we're fortunate, and we have like Todd Ray and maybe, I don't know, I had thirteen, fourteen people that work shift work, so they work those twenty-four hour shifts. So if they don't get held over or called back, they have free days off, and they contribute to that daytime response, especially that daytime response.
Do you find with like volunteerism down, as you guys have stated, and the number of active members that you have, do you find the career crews taking more of the lower-level calls?
Well, they don't go, occasionally, it's very seldom that there's not any volunteer that doesn't show up.
But you're splitting, but my question is.
So we always do volunteer first, and if we get to the six minutes, and we're short one person, because we only have to have three on the trucks now, the county standard is from four to three. If there's only two volunteers, and we've got to the six minutes, we do ready have one of the career staff to get on the fire truck.
But you'll break down.
But the ambulance goes with them, so when we get there, and it's nothing, they get right back together as the ambulance.
But what I'm trying to do then is that you have to pay career staff.
Right.
And what I'm trying to make sure that folks know is that when you have volunteerism that goes down, you still have the calls, you still gotta respond to them. But what you're doing, I think, is having to rely somewhat on the career folks as well to supplement the volunteers, which is, it's okay, it happens. But it's important to note that that is a need within the department.
Yeah, and that's what we do, and we make the best use of the manpower that we have. And one of the things, Councilmember Horace, that you brought up, and another local community just did it, is something that will affect the budget, and I'm sure I'll make the finance directors for them over there.
She can work out.
It's either she did, but it gets her job, and she does her good job, it's her job, because it will reduce your revenue. If you want members to live in town, and another town just did it, they give them a credit or waive their property taxes for volunteering, as long as they make the requirements that whatever that ordinance that that town did, and most of it is, as long as they meet the state requirements, which is our fifty points. So that's usually, that will entice people sometimes, because we do have people just like myself, when you're deciding where your domicile is, you look at all your expenses, and you want to be on town water, town sewer, town electric, town traffic, there's a benefit to all that. There's definitely a benefit to all that. But if you got a budget, the budget may overrule what you want to do. So that is something to think about down there?
I mean, if you don't mind just sending us that number, I'm just curious how many live in town.
Yeah.
While you're trying to recruit, it's probably helpful to see the benefits that do exist if you do hit the point system. You get tax credits, you get the county retirement system that you can pay into. Right, I mean, you get an audience, it's helpful to kind of say what exists.
Yeah, so that's what we do, it's in our recruitment brochure, so the benefits are camaraderie, number one, serving the community, but you do get some tax benefit if you make your required points off your income taxes, and you do get just paid in the linked service award program with your account. And you get free training, it's a lot of training, and that's one of our, unfortunate, that is one of the key things that concerns people, when we sit down and interview them, the board of directors interviews them, and when they go through that chart of how long that training takes just to be a basic firefighter, you can see the, you can see the look on their face, and they have to look, think, can I do this? There is a lot of time away here. I just looked at the class schedule that a local fire company is doing, two nights a week, and every Saturday for six months. That is a lot of commitment, and that person, you're working forty hours plus job, and have a family, and you're gonna give away, that's your class, that doesn't count how many times that fire Saturday is gonna go off, so it's two nights a week and a Saturday, plus our training on Monday nights, our evenings, the fire calls, personal life and the job, that's a scrub for somebody to sit down and help all that. Training is even, people have to be trained.
Leah, I attended, I don't know, what was it, Sarah, maybe, last year, I think, the symposium with MML. One of the ideas that was floated was the municipality had applied for DHCV funding to retrofit the house for like, well, volunteers that live on site, so like a live-in program, but not the firehouse, it was a house that was very close. And yeah, it was pretty neat. I actually left there, and I called a couple folks that were, that had their houses for sale nearby, and they're like, no, we don't want to do this. But I mean, it's worth knowing that that exists, so if there's a house that you see that's within close proximity, there is a pathway for funding something like that.
And we do have a place to stay at the firehouse. I stayed the other night at the firehouse all night, and we've got pump rooms and showers there, and kitchens, camaraderie, and one of the residents, so we do have places for people, volunteers to stay at the firehouse, if they like to do that. Not moving, and live there forever, but.
Take our residents?
Take our residents, yeah. So that's the total hours for the six months, whoops, I'm sorry, then the entire year, just touched on the total hours, fifty-seven hundred and fifty hours, and again, that varies by calls and different things. No real significant revenue highlights in the last six months since we met. For the entire year, we had a slight increase in donations, had a couple donations toward our capital equipment, our fundraising, the Easter breakfast we came through, we had a competing event with the sales, so the fundraising was down. The expense, the biggest highlighters are vehicle expenses, and we'll get to capital next, but our vehicles are aging, we give you that spreadsheet of the age of our vehicles every December. We've got, we have got now for probably another large expense, starting our fiscal year off, the ban, as I said, to hit that. off with a bang, as I said, to hit that budget right away. And there's our capital plan. And we have the engine that's on order, going to replace a thirty-seven-year-old engine in the rescue truck. The engine should be here late August. We hope late August might be September, but early in late August and the rescue truck should be here in December, maybe January. Our self-containment breathing apparatus has been delayed again. That was most of my afternoon spent communicating with FEMA and what have you, because of pushing a such late, the push that's very tight to deadlines, because the manufacturers are far behind. We should have had them in April. And I just got another letter last week saying until September.
Are you noticing any issue with the funding for that grant?
Uh, we're, we are working to make sure we don't lose it. So we're filming out a big workday today, you know, in touch with Senator Van House office by email, with three of his staffs, Senator Alsbrook's staff, and Representative Paris' staff, as well as the actual FEMA representative. But the manufacturers are behind, like a lot of places are. So we just, we keep on, we just keep doing the paperwork that we're supposed to do.
I noticed, Rebecca, if you don't mind.
Oh, sorry.
The engine arrives in August?
Should be, should be late August, yeah.
So the mayor and council appropriated ARPA funds to help with first principal and interest payment, I think, for the ARPA.
There was a partial payment. The, the loan is combined, but there was a partial payment with ARPA funds.
Like that would chance, if we can coordinate, you all bring that up one night to the mayor and council?
Yeah. Or, or probably in October or by October, there'll be, there'll be a time at the firehouse.
Dave, before you go to EMS, I just had two, two questions. I saw on social media, so you know it's true. But it was the Maryland State Firefighters Association post. So it says, as Maryland, this was a few days ago to now, but as Maryland prepares for a change over to nearest, which is the National Fire Instant Reporting System, it's a cloud-based platform. So what I'm basically getting at is that more, that's more on the county level here for you, or does this affect you?
No, it's the same thing we do now. We, we have to do a national fire report, it's just a change in software.
Okay.
And we're actually not changing the software. The software vendor is making the change for the federal government. So we're not even going to change software.
Oh, good. And then the other question I had, I think I saw, you know, the council, or the county commissioners meeting or a group, well, is your chief's group back up then, right?
The chief's group?
The, the fire, the county fire chiefs meeting?
They meet every month. I don't care to lose. That's the chief's, maybe I got them.
Okay. So I saw that.
Are you talking about the strategic planning?
The, the group of fire personnel that came around and talked to the commissioners about future of the fire service.
That's the County Fire Association. That's the budget?
Okay.
That's the County Fire Association, yes.
Do you go to that?
I do. I'm the vice president in September and president in following year.
And that means everyone?
That means everyone.
Okay. I saw, I think it was on a commissioner agenda, that they were doing a, they're voting to issue an RFP to redo the fire sirens. Are you aware of any of that?
That's through the county, right? The controllers.
Okay. So I just want to clarify, that's, there's, there was discussion way back when on the county of either using, I believe, the fire sirens for fire EMS or exclusively weather-related issues. I believe that we are continuing to have them using it for fire EMS or notification, correct?
Right. The RFP is just for the silver box that's in our station or the box in our station that communicates. That's what the RFP is for, to upgrade that. That was put in. We were trying to guess, I helped in troubleshooting something, we were trying to guess how long when I retired from Bostier, and how long I worked at our county, and how long I've been retired from there, to estimate how old that equipment was. And that has got some age to it.
So I guess roundabout, my question is going to be, are we going to stick with three sirens for?
This, this has nothing to do with the siren itself. This is the siren controller itself. The sirens belong, the sirens belong to the fire company.
And we just did, and the staff just did work with Bostier County Emergency Services to help access those points on the sirens via troubleshooting and that's what.
Okay. Dave, the old engine and rescue truck, you trade them in, you sell them, you keep them?
No, we don't, we don't keep them. So they will be put out, the engine, I just looked at Friday, so they'll put, they're usually put out to a broker. So the fire company is approved for that. I'm finishing up that work, work on some of that Thursday and Friday. So they'll be advertised and we'll try to get the most money we can.
Get some money.
Get some cash. It just depends. Sometimes you get lucky, somebody needs something. The eighty-eight engine is, is an open cab, so really you're going to market to a collector. And we have had a couple of collectors contact us with very low amounts of money. The rescue truck, you may get somebody that needs something like that, who's a very low call volume, maybe out in the Midwest somewhere. That's usually where these things, you know, they have these aged west, down mid-south, where they think they don't have a rescue at all. And they, they gather up enough money to try to get something.
The engine six oh seven?
Uh, yes.
Last, last one of the max?
Yeah, last one of the max. So, so we'll be partnering it, it'll be probably out, the engine will probably be out in the next two weeks on the broker slate. So for EMS, same, it'll be two slides, six months sliding, fiscal year's slide. So fifty-six percent of the calls, the last six months in town, slight decrease, that's similar to the fire four, forty of those calls. Total for the fiscal year, about fifty-five percent of the calls are in the town limits. And just a slight decrease, coincided with the six-month decrease. Transports, so the in-town, it's almost seventy-three percent of the calls in town, they are being taken to the hospital. We mentioned before about our transports, more and more the protocols and the specialties and the certain modalities not available at AGH, we're transporting more to Salisbury. Looking at the stats, it's not a huge jump, but we do see that trend during the more calls to Salisbury, down to Salisbury. So that's for the fiscal, fiscal year, that's still about seventy-three percent of the calls. That's the order of general calls, if we're going to somebody's location for an emergency, we're going to take them seventy-three percent of the time. Busy days for the EMS, Fridays, Thursday, Thursday the six months before, similar, very similar to the fire, that noon, the seven PM, then the six PM, when we're busy. Same thing with the fiscal year, Tuesday and Wednesday, in that busy time, in the middle of the day, right in the middle of the day. Response times for six months, one point one-nine. It's just a touch over the one minute, the sixty seconds is for a staff station, so that's why we put that sentence in there. We do still have volunteer response to third call, third calls. So that takes time for somebody to get from home. So that'll bring that average up a little bit sometimes, people waiting for somebody. Or the staff is at AGH, at Lang General, and they tell them on the radio, they'll cover the call, but it takes a little bit of time to get that patient off the stretcher. But they made a smart decision that it's certainly better to take the call than wait all those extra minutes for shout or urgent bond or emergency call. So that, so we don't, we don't get too concerned when we see that average, because we'll go down and look at the calls, and most of them are under, the minimum. And the same thing for, for the total of the year. Simultaneous calls for EMS are huge, two and three at a time, Saturday night, all night long, two at a time, two at a time, all night long, Saturday night and Sunday morning. And then we have one time where we have three, and three called at one time. So almost three hundred times. And over the course of a year, you know, six hundred fifty-two times where there's, there's two ambulances being dispatched at the same time or before the first ambulance gets cleaned up and becomes available. The revenue for the first six, last six months that we met, we did have our donor provide substantial amount of funds to put in a whole new bathroom area. That's being finished up now. What's left to do is the painting on the sinks, toilet, shower, shower door, everything. So that's the first time that's been touched since nineteen ninety-one. Shower hall, everything was expanded, so there's a little more room in there. That was underbuilt in nineteen ninety-one, we had one person on duty, now we have four under duty at the time, and sixteen full-time staff. The revenue, as we talked about before, in the SARS report, seeing that's in boys and revenues, we've had a one-time increase due to backlog at Medicare, with their reach in their systems. And we've done some internal procedural changes on how fast we bill. It's important to bill fast, because when somebody has certain insurances, they have certain limits, especially car accidents. And if they're seriously hurt, and we're slow on our ambulance bills, and here our bill gets in first, they can wipe that money out. So we, we try to bill our, I've even seen our billing company do uploads on Sundays. They're going there on Sunday afternoon, thinking I'm going to be ahead of them to take a look, and they're already exported their donor. So we've got a great, great billing company. We did have, the other thing to mention, we did have another donor provide this capital donation, and they just came in last week. So we now have mass casualty packs on all EMS units, the tourniquets and whatever, and we're back to having free protective vest on each ambulance, which are the best if the police need us to put them on for whatever reason, or they think we're going to go into a warm zone area directed by the law enforcement, the staff can put vests on just free on each ambulance, that they could put a rider or a volunteer on, only eight months, if they have three, on each ambulance. We'll take them, get that, support it. Our expenses, the salary expenses, we still have free permit vacancies, so we cover all that. Part-time people are overtime, holdovers, we've got people working thirty-six-hour shifts. We try not to be forty-eight, so if we don't have to, we'll tell you. I had one do a forty-eight this weekend, got one coming up with a forty-eight, to make sure we have people there. And then our vehicle maintenance repair has gone up, the age of, age of units has gone up. So our vehicle maintenance repair at the end of the year, we're at least twelve thousand five hundred over budget, and I saw a bill came in the mail that stated in June, so that's going to go up a little before. And then insurance has gone up. Nothing more than the malpractice insurance continues to go up. Here's our capital, the ambulance replacement plan, the twenty-twenty-five ambulance should be here in December. That fourth number, just didn't get an email on that, that's going to go up, because the chassis cost went up again. So that's going to go up. The twenty-twenty-seven ambulance will definitely, will have a significant jump, because that was priced on your twenty-twenty-three chassis, so that chassis price will be four year old when that comes in. We get seventy-five thousand dollars a year from the county. Town's got a free-year casino fund commitment, and we're definitely going to have to look to find more capital funding to stay on track with the ambulances. But we do notice, as we did before, when they, that one ambulance that's getting to its ten years, I, I swear, they've got a timer. I said this joke, there's a timer inside these things. At nine years, they just want to fall apart, because every time you turn around, that one ambulance is, is got something going on, but our chief engineer is pulling his hair out. Comment to somebody else's report.
You don't want to take that?
I'm not going to do that report.
I think questions for Dave regarding firing.
Mr. Fisher, I'm with you on that. Getting near that ten-year mark, I feel like if your car main tractor comes through your classic, that they're doing that. You know what I mean? All of this, but, yeah, it's like, you get to give seven point eight, or just before that warranty.
Yeah. And even the fire trucks, the fire trucks that used to be, and you, you all see, if you go back and pull what you got in December, and for some of me, like Christopher Rowe has been on the council for years, if he went and filed some of his older reports, we would have those engines showing as a thirty-year. We, we can't, the vehicles won't last thirty years. They just can't do that. The rescue truck's twenty-eight, and we're, we're, we just, we just been living with things for five years, with just, just nothing safety-wise, I just had his inspection, but some creature comforts, like air conditioning, some lighting inside, we just knew about it. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions for Dave?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Up next is Jen, item seven, town administrator in part-time.
Monday, August eleventh, at five PM, prior to the council meeting, the St. Peter's Flag dedication will be happening. The, we have several RFPs out there at the moment that come. A RFP is active, we just, we're active today with the Impact P and General P update RFP. I have rough drafted RFPs for on-call engineering services as both general engineering and stormwater engineering. These are just periodic refreshes of the.
Plus our branding agencies.
Right. Branding agencies require us more educationally. So I would like to, as we have been doing, have two councilmembers agree to be on a permitting to review those and undertake that process. If anyone wants to.
You've got two that fine.
I know, just that.
Jen, I think it's, that was for stormwater.
Well, the stormwater is for stormwater engineering, not for the.
But he serves on the subject.
Yeah.
Good job, Jen. You got the J.
Good job.
Mary, good job on the RFP.
Thank you.
And complac.
And complac.
All right. Anything, any questions from the council for the town administrator, any departmental reports that are in fact?
Mary, it's okay if you don't know the answer to this. I'm just, I know code enforcement is definitely happening, questions about it. I've, you know, I'm hearing things on my end and directing them to town halls, and understand our role there. From your perspective, how does that go on? Or, you know, with something that hasn't taken place in so long, understand there's probably some, you know, waiting to evolve for some folks. Have you, from your perspective, are you feeling like everything is going smooth, or you're hearing complaints from citizens about enforcement all of a sudden?
I am not. And that's a good sign. It means that when they're reaching out, either they're understanding what they're getting from the enforcement. I think a lot of times it's a matter of people simply aren't aware that whatever they're doing is, is against the government, I believe, or when they're reaching out to code enforcement, they're being made to understand what the situation is. But I think that it's really going very well.
Yeah. And I think I can speak to a couple of situations where I have to refer them to planning department, and grace has been shown, I think, you know, with some situations that have taken years to get to the point that they are. So I think that's a good thing, you know?
I've heard a lot of good things about the code enforcement, and then also the way that Shania is, Shania is doing the, doing the code enforcement and engaging with the residents. She does it in a friendly way, right? She's, she's approaching it from, let me, let me make you aware of what's going on, rather than let me just hit you with this and have a good day. So I think the way it's being delivered is being well received.
That's a good thing, I think. I think it's, you know, for all, we've preached that we've wanted that position for a long time. But for the citizens that are out there that have, you know, managed their properties the way they have, or accumulated what they have, you know, showing them a little bit of respect, and I think that goes a long way, something that's happening.
And some of us here that have lived in town can remember when we've had folks in that position that have not handled it in that way. And it doesn't, it doesn't go well.
No, it doesn't.
That's exactly it.
The way that it's being handled is going very well, from what I've heard.
Glad to hear.
Please share with me the process of when, when violations are cited and, and the regulations are shared. My concern is abandoned vehicles. At what stage do I see the vehicles gone? Or, or just what is in process? What do I get if I have abandoned vehicles on my property that are not tagged and, and are not moved? What, what violation do I receive?
The town code allows for citations and then cumulative citations to accrue.
And it's a, it's a notice version. It can be moved off the property eventually.
I think typically, Shania reaches out very often, she tries to make contact in person. If that doesn't work, she reaches out either by leaving a call in a letter or mailing it. And, and in that, she explains what the next steps would be if the person fails to address the matter. address the matter. And I can't speak to exactly what those steps are, they're different for different.
Yeah.
I know, but I think that's typically the process.
Okay. Yes. All right.
I think for me, I just want to say this part about, uh, code enforcement, I think she is phenomenal as far as, you know, being a grasp of, you have to be in order to do this job because they have to know the code. And she was like, you know, we talked a few weeks ago, she was like, you know, I have to know this inside and out before I can actually go and do my job effectively. And for her to verbalize that, to me, I mean, I got all the feels, I was just like, oh, it's so young, I didn't have it, but I was, but that part on top of the fact that she comes out and she tries to, she gets, she's nice to the people and she makes a nickel every week, she comes out, she has a conversation and she, she educates you on what the code says and walks you through and gives you time, timeframes and guidelines on, you know, coming up to code, those kinds of things. And I have to tell you, being a person who tries very hard to follow the rules just, just instinctively, like thinking about Mr. Burrell and abandoned, what he was mentioning about abandoned cars, I remember transitioning from one vehicle to one that's been freaking out in my head years ago, when it was like, well, this car is still here and it's not bombing today, but that doesn't exist anymore, you know what I mean? That, that train of thought. And like you just mentioned, I mean, I could probably off the top of my head name five or six locations where I've seen this, but I'm, you know what I mean, I know, I know, if I see it, I know she's seen it. And I'm wondering, you know what I mean, where they sit in that, in that queue as far as timing and that type of thing.
If you have any specific questions regarding a certain area or concern, you can always thank Mary and we can figure that out. Just, you know. Let's move on to comments from the public. Anyone that would like to address the mayor council? Seemed up, uh, we'll move on to comments from the council, Charles vice president Burrell. Councilwoman Burrows?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, I said, but, um, I wanted to give a, um, kind of a congratulations to Berlin as a whole and, uh, because of the turnout Saturday for the movies on the lawn, it was Runway Bride, um, it's the annual tradition now, and, uh, we celebrated the 20th, the museum celebrated the 26th anniversary of the movie's release. Um, had a great turnout, it was probably about 130, 140 people there on the lawn, maybe 150. So it was really good and I'm going to segue into a reminder that this upcoming Saturday is the Peach Festival, so we are definitely already in August and, um, that's what I wanted to say about, about.
And everybody's invited to the ribbon cutting?
Oh, great, yeah, well, yes, at, uh, 10:00 AM, the, uh, we're doing, the museum's doing the ribbon cutting and mayor council are invited, I believe you're doing a.
We're a citation.
Yeah, doing a citation.
First proclamation.
Proclamation, so that's going on and then it goes until 3 o'clock.
Citation, thank you, sir.
Citation, Peach Festival goes at 3 o'clock, so hopefully we'll see you all then.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
I just wanted to thank the folks who came out tonight. Um, I just think there was, you know, they're pretty transparent, you know, folks will reach out to me, that's really the best way is to come to this body to discuss it, you know? Um, so I think the fact that they came out on a summer night, um, is very much appreciated and respected for doing that, thanks for the way it was received up here as well. But overall, same page on that, I just think that we were hoping to go a, we had a different tact and I think that, you know, with the process of how we present this to the state, so, um, that's all of us want to appreciate how it's received by this group and them coming out.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burrows?
Uh, yeah, just want to say, um, congratulations to Kate for being selected for the certified public manager program. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, I would be the third person to actually enroll in the program. Natalie started on it, Kelsey finished about two years ago, probably now.
Twenty-one, last year.
Last year.
We got somebody in for the task of the year.
Yeah, so I'm at, uh, I don't know what to expect, I suppose, but it's, it's roughly.
It's been worse, only kind.
Six months, it starts at the end of September, it's a week-long, uh, full-time class that's live, uh, but it is done virtually. Um, a couple trips falls more for some mandatory in-person stuff, um, but it covers just a wide range of topics from, uh, leadership management, finance, asset management. It's, it's a huge network, it's not just the program itself. You get to know people because you will be assigned to a specific classroom, you meet with them, talk, um, behind a seat. Well, mine was virtual, but right now I think we try to be more person-to-person involved, so you might be able to visit Baltimore more and more often. Um, the only thing I'm hoping they would develop, I feel that after my graduation, I didn't get enough connection post-graduation, they're, I think, working on annual meetings or conferences, because once you connect with those people, you're going to get them lost because everybody has the career and job, but hopefully they will improve that. It's an awesome program, it gives you a lot of knowledge overall about management, but also other aspects and the reason, the main reason is you have to produce a product at the end that will potentially implement and put it out of your mind, it was smart earring, and I feel very proud that it was kind of.
In the midst of what we were doing, Kelsey, um, did a HR-related project, so.
I think she did, she did something related to the Southern Lady.
Mm-hmm. Thankfully we have a, there's a fairly good number of RFPs and projects underway, so it won't be too hard to.
We're not lacking on the projects.
Yeah, but I will be assigned a mentor to kind of work with throughout that process. It's ultimately a thesis if you were to do it at the graduate level, a thesis project.
So you live in the third, the third stone of the trouble crown.
The third from Berlin and the third on a scholarship, it has not cost the town anything except that person's time, a little bit of time.
And yet we received a good, very nice.
University of Baltimore, Schaefer School.
Schaefer.
Very nice. Also want to, uh, just state that I'm glad we're taking the initial steps to get sidewalks on Cold Ocean City Boulevard, um, very much needed, um, yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction with that, so thanks for supporting that and I'm looking forward to the Peach Festival, so it's going to be a good time.
It will be a great time to come see the students, people, I will be there during the game walk and we will also be doing some micro painting slash coloring. I'm all about those things, I've been trying to zen out these days, now that I'm in my fifth grade, I'm a little less, a little less hyped up and a little more, you know, but anyway, let me get past that part. So I'm loving, I, I mean, you guys know how I feel about Berlin, love where I live, but it's the small things that add up that make Berlin great. I truly loved, um, Christmas in July is my jam, so watching the whole art movies, but then to come into town and see Santa, the guy dressed as Santa on Sunday was cute, I loved that part. But I also, what really made me truly excited the Sunday before that at the farmer's market was seeing the new admin team for Buck Community at the farmer's market, meeting and greeting parents and families and children. That, I had to put my bag down and do a high five and a cheer right in the street because that is what Berlin is about. So to see that out in the streets, to meet the families, to give that vote of confidence and encouragement, hey, this is who we are, this is where we're from, that type of thing, was truly exciting and that goes to show that Berlin, real cool place. And Christmas parade, saw that announcement, so cute, I mean, right on, right on time and that makes me question, I saw that we were doing, uh, the, um, the funding for improvements on West Street, so hoping that any improvements may help us prepare for our busiest time of year, Christmas parade season, that type of thing, with, I'm not saying, you know, lots of lights, but something in that new parking lot, because it is starting to fill up right now for daylight events, so thinking about the more evening-ish things that are heading our way in the near future. Um, if my arms were big enough, I'd hold up all my signs. I've been trying to get these dart signs, plowing I don't know how long, and then these guys talked about turning it into an auction, which made me stomp and I was in protest to the auction initially because I wanted the signs and I told you I'd pay for the signs, but finding out that it happened and it was done for a good cause and we raised more money than anticipated, whomever you are out there that tried to outbid me at the last minute, that was not cute, it was not a good look. Because my kindergarteners truly upset because when I got that text on my phone as I'm teaching art, I literally screamed, ah, and they were like, Mr. Nickels, anyway, I got all my signs, thank you so much.
Ms. Nickels fundraiser for the community center.
I said that, so I'm happy about that part. I'm, I'm, I'm paying the fundraiser part, but I told you I would have brought the signs in, but.
Well, you did. How hard is your?
I don't know which one of you did that, but one of you thought that was funny.
Why would never?
Literally, it's big, they, they closed, and I'm going to stop talking in a second, but the auction closed at 12 o'clock.
We would have put it on your chair.
Eleven, eleven fifty-eight, somebody outbid, and then I screamed and the little children got scared and then I had to tell my phone to bid again, eleven fifty-nine, they tried it again, not cool guys, not cool. Anyway, anyway, and all fun guys, that was cute, but I still got my signs. Great idea, I can't wait till we do this again.
Hey, we've got some other stuff to do.
Was it you?
All right, um, so. Can I pull up, um, like VP, I just want to, one thing I have to mention, this is just a friendly reminder for everybody out there in, in the world, um, grass clippings, please, 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 um, try your best to keep them off of the streets and out of the gutters. Um, it's, it's not only a concern for our, um, collection systems, it's also could be a safety issue for walkers and folks who ride bicyclists. So, um, just motorcycles, anything, so please, everybody out there, uh, do what you can to help, uh, keep Berlin clean and, and safe, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, so we talked about the street sign auction, kudos again, Sarah, yeah, we're, so the public works, everybody that chipped in along the way, we raised over $10,000.
You did?
Most, everyone's either picked up their sign or it's red shipped, right?
Yeah, we still have, I have a few people who need to come and pick them up and that's just what I wanted to say. Did you say there's a few left? Yeah, so we're, um, we were able to mail all of them out, we actually had some help from, both from our post office and from Larnette at Brader Hill, she helped with packaging and it's just, it's been a real group effort. I'm really pleased that all of you participated and that you got the signs that you wanted and, um, that we were able to raise over $10,000 for the community center. Very good.
All right, and then the Christmas parade theme, so I'll booker it up, A Miracle on Main Street, and Steve, you can start here, enlist ham services.
Creative.
A Miracle on Main Street, a celebration of the holiday's favorite songs and movies, so think about what you want, hip hop on this maybe, something.
These are screws.
I'll let you just do that out over there. Um, but yes, so, uh, that's coming up and then we've already started with next year's theme because it'll be the 55th, uh, Christmas parade and it'll coincide with 250th birthday, it'll be Thanksgiving, so it'll be a little patriotic theme for next year.
We've got to have some win in this Christmas parade, we've got songs for musicals, right?
Steve singing, Josh singing.
You can't, you can't, you can't have Christmas.
Dean's dancing, he's not even going to play some.
What?
Oh, yeah. All right, so, um, now Kelsey, she's not here tonight, but she coordinated the short bird's game for staff.
The fireworks were cool, they did do them, despite a little bit of rain.
And, um, I think that's everything.
I just wanted to say, there you go, for allowing you to have a full staff, um, today was the first day for a new lead point at the county position. Linda Johnston came aboard and had a very happy day with us, so I'm hoping that she'll stay for a very long time. Also, a new customer service representative will start August 11th, she is relocated from Virginia, so she needed a little bit of extra time, she'll be living in Delaware. She's new to the area, but her parents did live in locally, so I'm excited. And the new project that Sarah is going to pitch in, we will be starting since I have now extra set of hands, is Berlin licensing plates.
Coming soon.
I want one of those.
That'll be a five.
The number, you know.
Will be the shield?
Yes, it's going to be the, uh, the anchor.
The anchor?
And I think they only allow us two letters.
Three letters.
So you do three.
So we would do DOE and the anchor and then the numbers.
Who picked your number, did you round numbers?
Well, it'll go one to the mayor's office, two to vice president, and then the others will draw hats for the council, and then it'll go, Mary, if you want, seven.
I believe you have to go by your district.
Oh, that's.
There you go.
Three, buddy. So no, it'll go one for the mayor's office, two for vice president, and then we'll.
You'll be the second, not two.
And then, and then you would do the picking and the hat for the others and then Mary, if you wanted to downweight and then both of the department heads.
Let's rock paper scissors right now, who gets it?
Oh, okay.
I will come with more details of that. It's still in the works.
Well, and the, what's that? How long? Tomorrow? No, 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 you have to go through the.
There's a process.
There's a process, there's an application, we're hoping it's a $25 fee to the tax whenever you do a vanity plate, but then we'll typically have like another fee on top of that that will go to the community center.
That's cool.
As a donation.
As a fundraiser.
As another fundraiser, and we're also, do you want to ask if people would be willing to pay?
Oh, for our next auction?
Let it out of the bag.
Well, okay, so we have this auction software that we purchased and we have access to it for a year, which means I think we should probably run another auction.
Every week.
In the future, we have 20 signs left over, I think we'll do a kind of like bid now, highest bid, you know, you can buy and take that kind of thing for the 20 signs that are left, but we could also add a few ideas that we come up with are, um, auctioning off a premier parking spot for the Christmas parade.
Oh.
I think that's good.
And maybe seating by judges' stand for, uh, the Christmas parade.
Reserve seating, yeah.
Oh. Maybe some future signs when we start to, um, do some work around town hall, if there's some signs around town hall that need to be replaced.
It has to be the mayor's spot, parking spot.
That's what I said.
Right next to the mayor.
I mean, my suggestion was to auction off the mayor's.
Yes, right next to the dumpster.
But it doesn't really have much appeal, but I think it's fun that you get the mayor's spot.
It's December, it's not too bad.
I think it would be fun and it would just be something else that we can add on with those 20 signs that are left and then, you know, get people even more excited about the Christmas parade.
Is there a group of?
It sounds like everyone's about words.
That, that's.
Interesting.
So when you're thinking about that, maybe we, we did, when there's a possibility of town slag, or, or there's a possibility of doing like a town, you know what I mean, little throw, maybe throw that in there for that space that.
She'd think you were going to do a calendar with all of us. You want to do a calendar with all of us?
I mean, we could do.
It works, that'd work.
I think it's a great idea. We'll price that out and make sure that it would be.
I mean, if you were doing that space, you know what I mean, you can do that whole little, yeah, water model or.
Maybe a V.
Yeah. Vice president, we'll allow that version. Actually, comments from the press. No, we already did, comments from the press.
Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, although it's been a short time, roughly nine months that I've been covering Berlin as a reporter, uh, this will be my last meeting that I'll be attending, I am no longer going to be working at your opposition, my newspaper, and I'm going to be enrolling in college.
That's awesome. Steve, congratulations. Where are you going?
Thank you. Uh, my first year, I'm going to Del Tech Community College and then I'm transferring over to Salisbury University. I haven't decided major-wise, but my first year, I'm going to try a few different classes like history, economics, political science, let's see which one I enjoy most and then major in that.
Feel it out a little bit.
You know, there's no future in history though.
And Salisbury has the best accounting platform and finance graduate.
The other thing is, is once you, once you find something that interests you, try to get in somewhere to figure out if you truly like it before you devote a whole lot of time.
Like internships.
Or just. Or just shadow somebody or something like that. But congratulations, we'll miss seeing you, but we hope, we wish you the best.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure covering the town.
Anything else from the press? Now, important news over there? All right, would your vice president, Mayor Officer, adjourn? Second by Councilmember Nickle, all in favor? Any opposition, you stay here by yourself.